Fledgling to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For everybody who remained standing for a moment of silence for the sick handicapped departed and our military personnel of the community. Thank you. Here. Yeah. Here. Bill Henderson. Mariposa. Here. 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 Fire Chief. Here. Thank you. Visitors, did anybody get a chance to sign in if they would like to speak into hearing? Okay. Carol, if we'd like to... You need to speak your name.
I would like to ask if you're supposed to be able just to read when you came associated with the advertisement as part of the information for what we hear.
Yes, this is the time and place of the duly advertised public hearing to take comment on proposed updates to the zoning ordinance, which are myriad and varied. I won't read the entire content of the advertisement for the summary of all proposed amendments, which will be discussed at length, including any ordinance, which we have approved publication of, have been duly published as required by law. And this public hearing is under the Environmental Planning Code, the first opportunity for council to take a look at review work that's been done by the consultants and planning commission. And this is a legislative proceeding, so this is, there's going to be time limits on taking action and by taking action afterwards, we'll say. I guess we could make as an exhibit to the hearing the approved publication notice.
Thank you very much. My name is Carol Yable, and I'm a planner with environmental planning and design. In the early part of this year, we started to work with the borough as related to updates to the zoning ordinance. And there was a focus of our work. The focus of our work was to essentially think about the B district as currently known as now, and thinking about how some of the uses, the definition associated with the land uses works together, or if there were some other conflicts. There were also some components of updates that have happened over time within the ordinance, and we incorporated those into this document, so essentially putting that all into one piece rather than having a series of them affiliated with it. One of the things that we did early on was try to understand the ordinance and its organization. In doing so, we actually created a comprehensive land use table that is part of the ordinance. It is about two and a half pages of the land uses. There are 82 land uses that are identified within the zoning ordinance. We did consolidate some of these uses where there may have been much more details in like a, on the level of a car shop or a candy store, when really those things are related to retail, so that from an administrative perspective, there was no change in the intent of those kinds of uses, but just in the usability of the ordinance. We did identify in this table that it's a principal land use table, and that for each district within the borough, there are a series of these 82 land uses. Primarily, these uses are identified as permitted uses by right. In some instances, we have identified that these uses are by conditional use. From the perspective of the process, a permitted use by right, as long as an applicant comes in fulfilling the requirements of the ordinance, that document is reviewed first going to planning commission and ultimately coming to you for your sign up. If a use is required as a conditional use, then that application is submitted to the borough by an applicant, and it is required to go through the conditional use process. The conditional use process identifies that there needs to be the information given to the public prior to it being voted on ultimately. It does go to the planning commission as part of its initial review, and then the hearing on such would occur as part of your process here at the council, and you ultimately have the ultimate word on the decision for that. The planning commission is allowed, as you are familiar, and we have set up in your ordinance now that they can have the basic conditional use criteria. Planning commission can make a recommendation for additional conditions if it's applicable to the subject property in terms of trying to make that work best with whatever comprehensive planning or other planning needs that you have in the community. Those conditional uses can be considered by you and as part of the hearing. You can accept those recommended conditional use provisions, and/or you as a council can also assign or identify additional conditions if you see that those are necessary. So that is a distinct process that comes in front of you all as part of the council. The land use chart does not at any point in time in this draft, as it's presented, have a special exception associated with one of these land uses. So the special exception would go in front of the zoning hearing board for any sort of decision that is not proposed as part of this draft. So all things come in front of you all for final decisions as part of this proposal. From the perspective of the ordinance itself, and I will wrap up in just a couple of minutes so people can comment, from the perspective of the ordinance itself, we did focus in, again, on B district. It is, we have aligned it with actually an M or a mixed use district, because there are frankly so many things going on. We have identified some of the criteria that was presented as part of the public comment to date and that planning commission considered. We did introduce an overlay. There is no specific map boundary at this point in time associated with that overlay, essentially trying to account for additional uses specifically, single-family homes that could be added into portions of the identified mixed use district, as that is something that those do exist, and those would are anticipated to continue, and they would occur as a use within the overlay. So we're trying to create continuity. We're also trying to clean up some of the things as related to the location of some land uses and sort of the interaction of some of the industrial types of things that are happening within the mixed use district now, and making those most compatible with the surrounding land uses in any cases for essentially setting up for instances of redevelopment or input. With that, that's my 10 minutes on, and if there are questions, I am happy to answer them at this point in time.
I agree fully really well, because I just got the same question. Except for you.
On your overlay, if I may, I see your overlay on Baldwin Street.
We focused on that one.
On your overlay.
No, we focused on the Baldwin Street neighborhood. The extent of that, if it were wanting to go up further, McLaughlin around the road, that that boundary can be, I mean, there's no specific boundary at this point in time that needs to be mapped. From a perspective, we're using that to identify that single-family uses are an element. If there is the desire in its extension to be the mixed use neighborhood overlay, the semantics of that name change are not a policy change, so it can be extended to the degree to which you would desire for it to be.
I definitely feel myself that this should be extended to McLaughlin. That's any question, but why, why we had the overlay on that in McLaughlin as well? I felt that the overlay would be better on Washington Avenue than I didn't know of that. That's my thing.
If you were to flip those, that approach, which you can do, what we would need to do is in the, can I have my use table? I'm sorry. No worries. If you were to do that as part of the land use table, what we would need to do is we would need to actually make it a D, I would recommend, based on planning commission's discussion and what we have heard to date, that an action would need to be deducted, because the matter of the single family within that corridor is what we were trying to specifically address. So if it were the mixed use corridor and on line 68, a single-family dwelling, then the asterisk would actually be associated with identifying that in along the Washington Road portion, and then that area defined, that it would be a deducted use. We are using it as an additive use at this point in time. You can use, and please correct me if I'm incorrect, Tom, Mr. McDermott, that you can use an overlay for either additive purposes or deductive purposes. So from a concept of however you would like to treat this boundary, we would do one, I would recommend we are either doing it one way, or we are just making the inverse of it, and it would then be deducted.
It depends how the rest of the council feel about that. I have another question.
Sure.
The 1015, the design standards for the M mixed use district, can you go in, can you give some definition on that? That's quite, in my mind, not too clear.
On page 14, you're talking?
Yes, the 1015, that's right, so you, you just said the correction, because I was kind of worried on the first one, when you didn't show the new one in mind. I read the old one, but then already told me there was, that the update was coming up, so I kind of settled down on that.
Right, so letters L through R was our focus of, essentially, letter L is where we were introducing, so it's on page 115. Unless located, I'm just going to call it, unless located within the neighborhood overlay that we were just referencing, that dwelling units shall be located on the second floor above, or located on the first floor shall be in a separate unit from the business and also in rear of the building. So from a perspective of some of the planning concepts that were put out in the various discussions before, we were deducting, or we were adding the fact that any land, any residential land use could occur within that overlay. It did not have a specific, any use within that district. It did not have to have a specific location. So that was our focus of the mixed use. From a perspective of other things associated with the design overlay, believe those have remained as previously drafted. Our focus became the mixed use district itself. So we did not, with planning commission, there was not a focus on getting into the particulars about things like off-street parking provision, or the shared parking for the mixed uses on the same lot, those kinds of things, because it started to then fold into lots of different other articles of the ordinance, and we had a charge to address some specific things as part of this.
When I mentioned the first time here, I think I mentioned twice, this, my concern was to change this zoning on very specific, and I call Mickey Mouse, a lot of these little things that go to the zoning office and so forth. I believe you did that, and I was happy to find out in the last minute that this was done, and I want to give change to the rest of the council and the public. Perhaps this is all, one time they were, they were all conditional use today, they're not, at least the way you're telling me, system leave facility, automobile service, car wash, well, I have a question more about that. High technology industrial, fire and emergency service, independent living facility, medical clinic, multifamily dwelling, nursing home, pet premeritorial, research and development, single-family dwelling. I think I was pleased the way they're not conditional use, they just, they just come to the planning commission council. None of these had to go before, as we were looking at, before the zoning office.
No, they're not special exceptions. We did not identify any special exceptions, and there are none of these uses that you just read or that are in the draft that would go in front of the zoning here in Ward.
Those are not going to the zoning office. No, they're not. They weren't before. They weren't.
They were conditioning, this is in the present law, and they're conditioning in the current law.
Okay, that's good.
There's nothing that's going in front of the zoning hearing board that would be able, that group would be able to make a decision without your input, unless you were, as a council, were showing up as part of their public hearing. Those applications come in front of you.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for, anybody in the public have a comment to make on what she's presented?
Did the planning commission already accept this? Did they vote on it or anything?
They, they did. Go ahead.
Yeah, by my, they did make recommendations. They reviewed, they gave correction on the drafting, then they reviewed the draft, and went over and made their recommendations as to what should be presented to, for publication advertising, sent to the county for review, and actually the document that they're looking at is the document that the planning commission made recommendations on.
Was it already sent to the county?
Yes, and it's an ongoing process. What happens is under the MDC, which is the state law governing, not what you have to have in your zoning ordinance, but the process by which you enact one, generally speaking. So to check, to make an amendment or a change to a zoning ordinance, tonight is actually part of the statutory proceedings that we have to do. What happens is, and it's something that starts at staff at planning level, and it comes here, but it's different versus if someone starts as a director of hearing and goes together. But generally speaking, it starts off with the interaction between the staff and the zoning expert and the planning commission, and then they talk through your present ordinance, some things they found, some recommendations, they get input certainly from the planning commission. And then they go and they went, and this happened from basically May through the summer, and then at the planning commission meetings, there were two, I believe, the first one got marching, the second one came back, reviewed the whole draft, they had some tweaks, final tweaks to that, and they made their recommendation, and subject to making these couple of final tweaks, that's what they wanted advertised. And then those tweaks were made, those final revisions were made, then it's advertised. And what happens is, is that you have to send it down to the county planning agent, see for their comments. Sometimes they give comments, sometimes they don't. And then you schedule the public hearing, and that's what we're having tonight. There's no, this is not like an application where it's, you have the hearing, you have to close and vote on it at a certain time period, because it's like legislation, it is legislation, so there may be, there's been suggestions that, hey, perhaps that thing on Baldwin overlay is a good idea, but why don't we consider McLaughlin's kind of the same area, maybe tweak that? And I'm sure there will may be other comments. So this is probably going to be the semi-final, and it goes back to like a final tweaking, gets resubmitted. Now, if there are minor changes, then we always need to resubmit those to the county, but you don't have to convene and advertise a whole new public hearing just because you changed some things that are not one of them. If you do something that's considered to be substantial, then we'll actually have to do a whole new public hearing. So tonight, you take public comment, they'll close the hearing, and then this hearing is actually different, separate from the meeting that they're going to have that you always come to. You know, this is a special hearing within the meeting, they'll close the hearing, and then they can take action, they can table it, they can send it back to the planning commission and the staff, or take whatever action they believe is appropriate.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else have any comments? As for motion to adjourn?
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you have something?
No, please, go ahead.
Overall, zoning can be an positive thing. If it keeps out, or if it places in areas like our industrial zone, the things that we really do not want in the center of our town. Zoning can also be an impediment to good development. The more roadblocks we put in front of people, the more difficult it is, the easier it is to go to raw land in South Fayette or Upper St. Clair and develop. It's far easier to do that than it is to redevelop. Some of the items in our zoning code, as Nina says, they come up looking like Mickey Mouse. Why are we going through this? We, and I'm using a specific example, rather than do that, let me bring two items to the table. One, we have as a conditional use, research and development. Research and development establishment, including laboratories, that carries on investigation in the natural, physical, or social sciences, or engineering and development as an extension of such investigation, with the objectives of creating and products, and that may include supporting storage and transportation facilities, and pilot manufacturing as accessory uses, but not including the mass production of such products. So you can invent it, but you can't mass produce it here. Now, the question is, why would this not be a permitted use by right?
Are you asking in the mixed use district? Because it's permitted, it is permitted use by right in the industrial district.
Yes, but why is it not permitted?
Why is it not a permitted use by right?
Well, why is it a conditional right?
Why is it a conditional use?
Yeah, I can come up with my own reasons, but you, let me, because each one of these is a roadblock. If I want to have, if I have in my office that I want to do some research in engineering, if Joe Seitz decides the gateway should have an office in Bridgeville, you better watch out and not do any kind of research and development before he comes down to the planning commission and then the council.
With all due respect, I don't believe that's an accurate interpretation of research and development applied to the example you gave to Joe Seitz's engineering office that would be in the office.
Well, no, it says here.
But research and development, that definition is intended to be, correct me if I'm wrong, a subset of a light industrial use type use, where you have, in fact, they talk in the definition, a lot of associated transportation, those sorts of things, which, and it's not uncommon, and I can guarantee you that there's no more owners or people who are less known as they find in South Fayette or Upper St. Clair. This universally, as a planning matter, larger scale developments that have a factory or a building, a factory type facility, they're making the widgets, they belong in a, in a light industrial zone, and you have large transportation and out, those sorts of facilities. And with respect, Bridgeville is not off the charts here, well within, and this is not changed by this, this is one of the ways we're standing. It's, the plan was to tell you sensible planning in zoning to have more complex developments go before your planning commission and your council. Now, I would agree with the school of thought, you don't send that stuff to the zoning hearing board, they're in the business of planning, you are. And that's pretty universally accepted. Conditionally, and I will say this to this, this is, as far as being a roadblock, I mean, Joe, you can correct me if I'm wrong too, in my experience, 99% of the time when you have a conditional use, you always have a companion site plan, a land development plan. Those are going to the planning commission anyway. The conditional use just gives folks ability to look at other aspects, larger global aspects of the planning process, the planning process in the context of that plan. So you're not creating 99.9% of the time, new or more owner's procedures, you're just adding breadth to the review you're doing.
You're adding a layer to the review process. You're already, you know what you're doing with a conditional use, is you're basically putting ground rules in place that the people have to comply with. Take for example, we have the one for the auto sales, there was a list of conditions that had to be met, and the size of lots, storage, you know, it stated where cars had to be stored, and the law had to be paid. So those things are presented as the groundwork and rules for the applicant to follow if they want to establish this business.
That's right. And in some, and those are kind of, and there are some that become more complex, because even though they are objective, those are the ones, which helps both parties actually get to a better result. It gives council, who are the planners, planning commissioners, engineers, and the planners of council are the folks who are charged with making sure that the development is done sensibly and objectively. Again, I don't believe, and it's universal, all zoning offices, they have this, this is not more owner's than you find in other smartly planned communities.
I think there are a couple of points of consideration, and I'll use this specific example of research and development as to why that approach, conditional use, is actually very typical for built community such as Bridgeville, or a built community that is not necessarily built. The first one is that, to your point about the process, the conditional use and land application, a land development application or site plan can be run in concurrent fashion. So it does not necessarily add a specific process in addition to the process timeframe that is identified for a land development application. So they can be run concurrently. So from a time perspective, I think that is, we should move on from that discussion to the next discussion. And then it is in terms of research and development. Research and development today compares to when we were much younger than we are right now, is probably a little bit different. The nature of what is happening with, what we're doing in our minds and applying it to things is the same, but the materials that we are potentially using could be very different. From a perspective of research and development could be, from this, something that is generally or is primarily digitally oriented. There isn't a whole lot of product necessarily. There could be 3D printers, there could be all this test, from a laboratory perspective, there could be different, you know, set of space, how that space is being used, but they need to try, try, and try again, and they're going to fail, and fail, and fail until they get it right. So from a perspective of storage of that kind of thing, that often also needs space. That digital type of application, or someone who has a lot going on with technology, could as define as research and development, is also in the same category, and I am going to use an example that is not here right now, but that is the Jarvis Heart work that is done on Second Avenue, where there are cows that have panels so that they can see how the heart works. That is research and development at the same time. They're figuring out how that technology works. The way in which an application would come in front of you would be in a conditional use process, you would have a thorough understanding of specifically what is happening as part of that process, the space allocations for those, if there needs to be some sort of storage. It gives you a level of scrutiny within a business court, primarily a business court, or what you're trying to set up as mixed use, residential and retail and office, that depending on the scale of how that research and development operates, it may be a very legitimate use in no matter what they're pursuing. But how they access for storage, or deliveries, or the garage doors, or the amount of, or how the building is presented to the street, what kind of level of pedestrian activity so that it complements all of the things that are happening now, is a level of scrutiny that I believe is something that the borough would want to evaluate, and they would be able to do that and comment. and they would be able to do that and comment on it as part of the conditional use process. They wouldn't, you would not have the same ability to make those kinds of levels of scrutiny and recommendations as part of a permitted use process in the business district. I'm not saying that use is going to happen within the mixed-use district. I am identifying that based upon this designation, that it is primarily intended as an industrial-oriented or production, I'll call it, production-oriented facility. They're not producing products, they're producing ideas, production. And that fits within what you're doing as the mix of industrial versus, again, the retail office, residential sort of complement. That is the primary intent of the mixed-use district. So that would be my consideration for that.
It sounds very nice. And it usually does when we sit here. Obviously, we do not want the mad scientist or what's the cartoon where the little kid's got the, you know, the thing where he does whatever, you know, blows things up? Obviously, we don't want that in our business, in our mixed-use area. We don't even want it in our town, but maybe down at the industrial area. The mad scientist can go there. That's not what your paragraph says when it defines research and development. And by the way, most of this stuff has been in our ordinance for many, many years. This wasn't something that, Carolyn, you brought to us. You didn't go through here and add these things.
We tried to clarify. We tried to clarify where there were things that were out of the vein of what the intent of some of the uses were and made definitions to those. We did add some definitions to this ordinance when we, I mentioned we consolidated some of the uses of like uses so that they were in general planning.
You tried.
We did.
But you started with the base ordinance that we had.
Correct.
And the objective was not to modify it in any dramatic error.
This was not as, this update is not an overhaul of the current ordinance. It is an update that was targeted to the mixed-use district.
And so it does not, to the audience, it's good. It really focuses on the mixed-use district, which is, we all used to call the business district, the main brag.
It's the red area.
It's the red area on the map. You know, that's what we call it. That is the area. So it's not affecting the yellow or the white areas, which is where we all live and, you know, maybe, I don't think there's any real change there. The second area is with regards to the design items for mixed-use. And specifically, the look and feel criteria. Of if you're on the same block, having the same roof line as your neighbor, or if you're on the same block, having the same, you know, not septic. Look and feel. You know, no blank walls here, no things. In other words, if you're, if you've got a building on Washington Avenue, that your roof, if you build a new one, that your roof needs to look like the roof next to you.
Just the facade.
Okay? Just the facade of the roof, or just a piece of the roof, or just this or that or the other thing. The justs, the little things are the impediments that stop us from moving. Okay? You have somebody comes in and has an idea of doing something. They want to do it, and then they have to go through, you just listen to them for ten minutes. Did that sound clear to you? If you were trying to develop in this town, could you make heads or tails out of that?
No.
And they're great. They do a good job. And so does our zoning officer, you know, to try and make sense out of it. I'm suggesting to you, council members, that you ask them to continue to work on this. And specifically, you know, the designing standards. And look at removing some of them that don't need to be there. And look at permitting things that you can permit safely. Again, having a look with their judgment. And perhaps bringing it back to you in November when we have a full component after they've made some of those revisions.
I agree.
Can I make a comment? As far as the zoning ordinance and the current one, or the one that is proposed, what I can say is, when a developer or whomever comes in, whether it be a small variance or something larger, by the time we're finished with them, between the building inspector, the engineer and myself, they do understand the zoning variance and they do understand what is, what standards they are required to meet. So we make sure that they understand that.
I will attest, they do, they do an excellent job, given the law that they have to work with, right, Lori? We have to work within the law council has.
We have to work with our zoning book and we make sure that they understand and can move forward in a positive manner with what we're working with.
And builders and developers and their consultants are all, they know this stuff as well as we do.
Right.
They know these books. This is not strange to them. Maybe strange to somebody who doesn't do it every day. But it is not a foreign concept that folks can work with it every day. It's very consistent with what happens every, for a moment. And again, the planning process just gives you folks, and it's not, the difference between something that's permitted use as a right and a conditional use in addition to some of the things that was here touched on, are the objective standards are objective, but they cannot be specific because the land, the pieces of land aren't all the same. It's easy in a neighborhood to say, okay, the lots are going to be this wide and this long, the houses are going to be this story, you set back this much and an easy square to work with. When you go down to a business district, you have different shapes of land, heights of land, types of land, uses of land, and tweaking things such as loading requirements, parking requirements, getting in and out is something where you can't make a rule that's a one-size-fits-all. And that's where the interactive process comes in. For instance, we've had developments elsewhere, I know Joan Alba, we're going where that process, and for the EMS people discovered, and there was no specific rule that would have caught this other than the broad objectives was that, hey, you know what, you guys need to tweak this one bend around here because we can't get all the fire trucks around one angle that you have there. I mean, that's just one small example. Those are the sorts of things. And parking, you can't be putting too many bombs of stuff in the back. You have to make sure you have all the parking requirements, not that you interact with your authority. Those are major plans, especially if you put a major building up or a major reuse, a major new employer. It's going to bring some extra people or have an impact in the business community. That's why that, and again, it's mundane and standard pretty much everywhere.
So none of those cannot be done the way you guys presented to council. They have to be permitted. You cannot make those non-permitted, I mean permitted, I mean.
Well, they're permitted.
They're permitted with condition.
Which just means they go to the planning commission and before you folks. Where they would come anyway because invariably they
Have to sign a plan.
Whatever.
So in some one, they are permitted.
Yeah, oh, they're permitted. In fact, I described conditional uses as permitted answers with an asterisk.
They are permissible.
That's, that's
From the perspective of, if there is going to be a public hearing that is advertised, like this one, so that people can comment, that would be essential difference between a P and a C. In a P, you're not going to have this kind of event. In a C, you are, but it goes through the same sequence. That's right. So I, if I may say this from a perspective of, there's consideration for additional thought in November, that the design standard piece in terms of the nuances of form and compatibility was not yet a focus of our work with the planning commission. We wanted to ensure that we could get the uses addressed and the sort of circulation aspects and all those kinds of things, including up several parking. What I'm hearing is that if there were additional considerations for this, like tentative team section, that I think it is important as the borough, as we move forward in the next couple of weeks, in the other things that have been authorized in terms of looking at specifically some of the relationships of the land uses and all those things within the Baldwin Street corridor. And because I think in, frankly, that some of these provisions may be adjusted specifically from that work, or ultimately from that work. So it may not be the first and only time that we are looking at these design standards. The secondary piece of this is if it were desired that the design standards were in something else besides the zoning ordinance, I mean, we'd have to consider if that were logical or not. Just actually scrapping them from this document in itself. Or if there was a design sort of standards, separate ordinance, or I mean where you're addressing all those other kinds of things. As long as we are tying it to, we have to evaluate. As long as we are tying it to the comprehensive plan and that there is some element that you're recognizing in the MPC that you can regulate form based upon established neighborhood character and we're tying it back to that article or that section with the NPC, we can handle it in a number of different ways. We can put that in front of you for your consideration.
Sorry, in a very, excuse me, so in a very, in a very short term, when the revenue meeting will be, of course, we are not ready actually, source I'm concerned, the paragraph to discuss that to be completely deleted. And I don't see any motion, Mr. Chairman, to make or anything. We do have additional things here, and it comes from mine. We can present it to you, from us, and
And go forward.
And go forward because we have to consider Bridgeville. You know, I don't give a other community, we have to consider Bridgeville. I wish we were rich like South Fayette, that you see on the paper, the school board, don't build anymore. I wish we could say that. When we want built, since we need this Mickey Mouse to go away. So to give the contractors to come in and say, what the hell I want to build in Bridgeville for that, to the wall, the building. So anyway, Mr. Chairman, I think we understand each other that we need easier. We still have ten, Lori.
That's why we're doing this. That's why we've done that.
The focus was on the land uses and the function of the mixed-use district. This is an element that extends that conversation and understanding.
Very good. I think we don't want to say big
You're going to say much.
Yes. Hi, hi.
We don't want to say big to make some, some
What I heard this evening is that we will present some information to you and you can consider it as part of your next process.
Let's take it. If I, let me just throw everybody's information, council, and the audience as well and supplement some of the presentation. In terms of simplification, you touched on the chart at the beginning in terms of term of making things user-friendly and all. Those are very, you know, those are very nice for folks because it makes it much more easy for your, everybody to just look at it. You don't have to read five different chapters, figure out what you can do here and there. You can look at this chart, it's very easy to know exactly what you're allowed to do where. So that, I think, is one thing. Talking about conditional uses more than much. The overlay, we will certainly take into account the parameters of some of the suggestions. She had, she was telling us that consideration, that's a good concept. From the flag raising to the main walking as well, so we can talk about suggesting broader, you know, perimeter for that. On the design standards, it was, you know, planning commission was not inclined to take that up within their, we did have discussions with them about it, and there seemed to be consensus that they were not inclined to, you know, upstream vendor, upset the upper coordinate at this time. That's something that we could bring back to you and make suggestions. I think council was one of your pros and cons. Different communities in their core business have these. There's things about them, there's also, I guess, arguments that are equally valid on both sides to total laissez-faire the design standards, kind of the character of the neighborhood. You do have some architectural, you know, turn-of-the-century type of buildings or whatever. I know there's two schools of thought on it, and then we'll present that to you as well. And just two notes I wanted to make, that there were some simplifications that were made and Carolyn's suggestion on me. And in most other ordinances, you have like five different categories of housing types. You have your singles, your duplex, your townhouse, and then gardens and apartments and everything. Those have actually, for simplification's sake, been collapsed into just really three types of housing types. Your single family, your duplexes are still the same, and they're still where the limited areas that you happen to be expecting to be in your neighborhoods where you live. For the multis, they've been collapsed into one definition of multi-unit. So everything from a townhouse to a four-unit, to a five-unit, to a building are all now encompassed in one kind of universal definition of multi-use building. And then the densities are kind of similar, and they just go up in scale with that. So that's actually an easier, I think, a simplifying thing. And then finally, I think there's some folks in the audience that might be interested in the height, the national requirements. And that was a focus of the mixed-use district, is the question of whether we should increase, with some exception, we had in the residential housing, it was done years ago to accommodate the senior housing. With the exception of that, the general generic business building was limited in height. So the question was, should there be any distinction between what's in the building and how high or what shape it should be? And the consensus was, no, not really. So what has been done is the height, the limitations on the height of a building in the core business district itself and the mixed business district has been liberalized so that as always, you could build a building up to forty-five feet, which is what, three or four stories?
Four.
With, as a P, as a right, don't even need to come here. Once you get above forty-five feet, because the planning gets more dicey, gets more complex, and there's more moving parts and new things to consider, that is limiting the planners in a degree. So conditional use, where it comes before council, the planning commission and council. And that allows them with objective but flexible criteria to deal with issues of, perhaps there needs to be mitigating things that are done in design and other factors to account for a large building and its impact when it's immediate business neighbors actually as well. So that's the other thing. And along with that, they've eliminated the setbacks in the business district, just like downtown Pittsburgh, downtown Bridgeville, always done, like many of your buildings. You're a lot of builds, you know, square to square upon property, buildings by up against each other. Another, that's another liberalizing factor. So I think that hits the highlights.
Okay, I'm going to go on the meeting. The height, as I told you on the side, I mean, before the meeting. Thank God we don't have the the limitation of earthquakes over here. Seventy feet, eighty feet.
Well, you can actually go up to one hundred and ten.
That's it.
Yes. The conditional use starts at forty-five
Forty-five, right?
And then up to one hundred and ten.
Hey.
So zero to forty-five, you don't even have to come to see us. Forty-five to one hundred and ten, it's just a more, it's a planning process just like you
There'll be more people there, more money for us.
You have a high tier now, it's not a new high tier.
I love the way our town is. I like it.
Show them off. Bye.
That's smart, bye.
Is her report available for the public? Is her report available to the public to look at, or is that not?
You mean it's
I can edit it like a bar many?
It's been available.
It's been, it was advertised, it'll actually, I thought it was on the website, it's not what we put on.
Okay.
Yeah, we can get digital copies of it.
But I mean, there is one down here at the
The ordinance, yes.
Yes.
It's not a report, it's actually an ordinance, the usual. It's just like the zoning ordinance was, but it's highlighted shows changes in the draft updates. There's a marked copy and a clean copy of what if those changes were made.
Okay, thank you.
I'm wishing to adjourn with the hearing. We have a first and second on the favor. Yes, eyes out. Thank you. We're going to break for about five minutes and then we'll go to the council meeting.